The school committee will reopen the public session of our meeting for January 12th. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting, but can be viewed live on the Zoom link that's on our agenda. And a recording will be available on our YouTube page as well as it being streamed live on channel 14. I just want to mention, obviously, that we're meeting via Zoom. We scheduled this last week when we were remote. And so we're also remote. And I didn't ask anybody to read our mission. Does anybody happen to have it in front of them? Melissa, go for it. Thank you.
I know I recently read it, but I happen to have it right here.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Falmouth Public Schools' mission, that Falmouth Public Schools creates a world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. Falmouth Public Schools' vision, Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you. Thanks for doing it twice in a row, too. So I remind the members of the public that if you're going to record audio or visual, please notify me as required by the open meeting law. Do we have anybody who's recording? You can just use the raise your hand signal. We have a lot of people today, 18 panelists and 21 attendees. Okay, great. Next, public comment, please limit your comments to two minutes per individual to items not on tonight's meeting agenda. There's no debate or action taken on public comment. Do we have anybody who would like to make a comment? You can just use the raise hand and then we'll make it so you can talk. All right, I don't see any. Oh, and I also noticed the first person on the list is Abby, our new reporter from the enterprise, who's going to be covering school committee meeting. So welcome. Okay, moving right along. First up on our actual agenda is update on COVID from Scott McGann. Scott, sorry we kept you waiting. We had to wrap up an executive session, so.
I basically live here at the office.
What's new?
Yeah, I have to go find my family. I think I still have one laying around somewhere. All right, so I got, you know, news about the code, about the, about the cases. And also we could talk a little bit about the vaccine. I think people may want to know where we stand with that. So I'm going to take the screen quickly. Oh, can you enable, enable the screen so I can?
Yeah, can somebody make it so Scott can share? And I'll also mention, I don't know if anybody checked their email right before the meeting, but we did get a copy of Scott's most recent presentation. So if you want to.
Yeah, if you don't want to wait, it's also posted on, on our website as well, too. So let's start, you know, basically the new year. You can see that we had, you know, in December, we were in that sort of 60 to 85 case range on a weekly basis with a fair amount of that up to like 30, 40% of that being long-term care. And then as the long-term care dropped off, the cases were more in the 45 to 50 range. But this particular week, we haven't had a great week. You can see we're at 821. So we're in that, I gave it a red star to where we are for this week. I cut this off Thursday night, so we still have a little bit of time between now and then. Sometimes things, you know, there's not really necessarily a huge rhyme or reason. It doesn't come in consistently. We can have a day where we get 20 come in and a day we only have two come in. So I don't know what we'll end up being, but it's not as quite as good as it was the two previous weeks. We are, you know, as far as the cases go, there's some of that, a little bit of that is long-term care and some other congregate care that we have in town. So that's a little bit of it. Most of it is a result of small events, gatherings, things of that nature. And so there's not necessarily like one particular thing. I know it's easy when, not easy, but you know, when it's long-term care, when it's sort of spread out. And that's kind of where we are. So we do have community spread. Going on to the next slide, just to let you know that the positivity rate, we're well over our caseload for either being yellow or red, never mind green. And the positivity rate determines whether you're going to be yellow or red. Coming over to Falmouth, we were at 4.2. So basically the same as last week. So I'm at that bottom line, the 1-7 line. That particular week, again, this is the two previous full weeks. This comes out on Thursday, so it's 12:20 to 1:02. Our positivity stayed in the yellow is 25 per 100,000 because of our positivity being less than 5%. Our testing over, if you look at 1231 and 17 is low, 3,000 to 3,500 in the two-week span is a lot less than over 4,000. But keep in mind, you lost a couple of holiday days, Christmas and Thanksgiving, Christmas and New Year. So that's going to keep it low. I'm hoping that that'll, you know, come back up, you know, to into the 4,000 test range. So we're looking at Barnstable County. You can see that Barnstable County's positivity is 6.29 and the state 7.71. So typical for Falmouth, we do better than, definitely do better than the state for the most part. And usually slightly better than the county or match the county on any given week. I thought this is all the Cape and the island towns, you can see that most towns are red. Where we've held strong at yellow, hopefully with the testing increase that we can remain yellow. We're also getting some probables into, the antigen test is also available locally. Some of the doctors' offices are using it, convenient MD, I think is giving you now a choice. So, you know, there are also some probables that don't show up. But I think that the state metric does take into account some, some tests banging into probables and not necessarily confirmed because we deal with confirmed on our metric. So again, not great. Is it flat? I don't, you know, it's hard to say, take four days or three days and say that's the trend. You have to look at it over, over, over a short period of time, at least a couple of weeks to see what the trend is. We're aggressively contact tracing. The CTC has hired a lot of extra people. So when cases are not handled by the VNA, they go to the state CTC Contact Tracing Collaborative, Community Tracing Collaborative. That has been pretty robust. We've been pretty aggressive trying to jump on the case as quickly as we can. And the CTC has stepped up and hired a lot of extra people so that the contact happens as quickly as possible. So obviously, you know, from a health department standpoint, the more cases, the more work. So we've been working really hard on the cases. Going over to hospitalizations, down the bottom is the most recent data I've got from the county, 1-9, which had 10 Falmouth Hospital and five in the ICU, 20 and 11 at Cape Cod, which mirrors sort of what we were in that April timeframe when we're in that an average of around, like that particular week was, you know, that's at the top of the chart. It was April 21st was an estimated 59, three-day average for hospitalizations. We're at 51 now. So we're very similar to what we were earlier in the pandemic. So cases are up everywhere. If you look at the daily dashboard at the state, you know, we're going to be up as well. We're not just going to be, we're not, you know, insulated. This isn't an island 40 miles off the coast. We are going to have our cases in with the state and we have. We're holding our own, but you know, I'd definitely like to see the cases get down. So that's it from a case standpoint. Obviously, it's not like it was in the summer, not like it was in the early fall. And we're amidst that of that, you know, second wave that everybody was dreading. Maybe I'll break this in half. Is there any questions on this end as far as cases go?
And I can't see everybody. So if you have a question, just go ahead and pipe up.
Yeah, I'm used to Zoom. You can just all start chiming in. Zoom expert.
I think we're good.
Okay, so let's go, let's go.
Oh, there's Leah. Leah, what's your question? Sorry.
Hi Leah.
Hi Scott. So when you were saying around small gatherings or small events and gatherings, do you, do you get a sense of what kind of gatherings these are? Are these like playdates? Are they parties?
Sleepovers. Teams, things, you know, it's just different, different ways. It's not likely, like again, if you were seeing a lot of transmission, let's say at your local grocery store, you would see a lot of employees and you're not actually seeing a lot of, a lot of employees. So you're seeing it when you, when you, when you look through it. It's close contact inside, no social distancing and the mask. It's not, it's not the casual contact, you know, that could possibly change is that new variant that you guys may have been hearing about, that it's a lot more, it might be a little bit easier, seems to be easier. But it really does, it does generally because of a breakdown in the guidance, right? So everybody knows what they should be doing, but not necessarily everybody does it. And so you're seeing it, I mean, it's hard for me without hip, but it's not saying exactly like, you know, certain things. But it really is small, you know, again, if you're, if you get 50 cases in a week, it might only be 35 homes, right? Because it's going to move every three to five days through somebody, the family member, especially in homes that not only have one bathroom or it's an apartment where it might be shared with a bunch of, you know, you know, like, you know, think of your days, my days when I was in my twenties and you have five roommates or something of that nature. It does tend to go through that pretty quick. So I do see it multiplying in households. And that's, and that's always been the number one way. So it doesn't take a lot of cases to get to 80. It might be 60 households and 80 cases or some sort of number like that. And how, where did the 60 came from? Well, it'd be 30 of them that might have been associated with, you know, going to something or being with somebody. And even, you know, as the, as the cases go up, you have your circle. So you have a circle of friends. So let's say it's five or six friends that you trust. Well, occasionally, occasionally someone was in contact with somebody. And it could have been something, you know, that might have thought it was benign and it was brought it to your circle. And now your circle gets it. And so it's really, you know, what I've been trying to tell people is to think about the, what they were doing to protect themselves earlier and continue to do some of those things. And, you know, it's a lot of its shock, like I didn't think so. I've been doing a good job and it's my same group of 10 friends. But it was the, one of the friends that you happen to hang out with, you know, in the car or whatever, or went out to eat or whatever you did and you guys spread it to each other. But it doesn't take, if you think about it, it doesn't take a lot to get to 60 cases in a week. When you know that on average that, you know, every other household is going to have at least two at the end of it, right? So it doesn't take a lot once it's around. Again, we have about 21,000 households in town, so some sort of number like that. So 60 is, you know, high for us and not what I like to see. But it's not like it's, you know, every time you walk out, you're going to get it type of thing, right? It's not quite at that level. Sorry, I'm rambling a little bit, but go ahead.
No, but I think Leah, I think that that's a helpful question to ask because, you know, from a public health standpoint, we know that telling people to stay home and don't see anybody ever doesn't work. You know, people just don't, and because then they don't know how to be safe, they end up doing things that are not safe. So like having, you know, as an adult, if I have two friends over and sit outside eight feet apart around a campfire, is that a safe activity to participate in?
Yes.
Okay, which would explain why when I did that and the person I was with was COVID positive and we didn't know, I didn't get it.
Yeah, it's like the bike, I call it the bike path argument. One of the number one complaints in the summer was the bike path. And I think the likelihood of you getting in on the bike path, even if two people don't have a mask when you're transiently crossing each other in the middle of the summer with a wind blowing out of the water is very remote, right? So outdoor types of things are you know, many factors safer than having something inside. So it's the, it's the inside, it's, you know.
It would just be helpful, I think, for, for kids and adults to have like a metric, like these are the least safe. These are moderate, these are safe, you know, these are relatively safe.
Yeah, we had that, the state had that up. I think if I dug, I would still be up there, you know, we could pull that out.
But whether or not that's, you know, even still, things have changed so quickly.
Well, the disease hasn't changed, so it still spreads the way it spreads, right? Inside, close contact. You know, and it's, it's just, it's not different in that sense. It's just, you know, it doesn't, again, it doesn't, we have 30 something thousand people here, you know? So it doesn't take a lot to go from 20 to 51 week of, you know? So that sort of fluctuation happens. It's just, you know, but it is more prevalent. There's, you know, when you're at five or six a week, you're almost at zero when you're testing 4,000 people and you're like five. And now we're not at five and we're somewhere in that, you know, 50, 60, you know, sort of cases. And which might be, like again, 50 cases might be 35 households, which, you know, you can see how 35 times that something bad happened in the scheme of humans moving around in town. Does that make sense? Yeah.
Yeah.
One more comment, just, you know, Scott, you, you mentioned that we are at a level that we were at like in April with hospitalizations and cases and things. And, and you think about what happened in April and that we went into a full lockdown. And, you know, we really were very scared and vigilant around. So I mean, I think that just in kind of that data point is really important to acknowledge and say, hey, remember we did have to go into this kind of mode of really being very, very careful. And, you know, I think personally, COVID is now very close to me. Like I, you know, just knowing people who have COVID and, you know, it's, it's definitely much more in our community now than I was aware of it in April, because I think we were in that shutdown mode and not as aware of maybe. But I just think that that data point is really important along with, you know, Kelly, I like this idea of what is a safe way that you can meet a friend, right? Or because people need to do this. We have teenagers, children, you know, need to, need to be around others. So what does that look like? So I think that would be a great thing to be able to share.
Yeah, like if they have, if you could, if your child has a license, they could drive to the beach and once it's in one car and once it's in the other, things of that nature. There's, that's what my kid, well, my oldest does. You know, and, you know, we have a tight control over the individuals that come to the house and it's very limited to a couple of people. And yeah, you can't just say, sit in your room till, you know, we tell you you can get out. There's only so much Minecraft the kids can play.
I don't know if we have hit that limit yet.
Well, what's that other game now they do with the animal farm or whatever it's called? That's the other one. Yeah, I mean, again, you got to do the best you can and manage it the best you can. And the scarier thing in April was we just didn't have enough testing to know the true burden. You know, but the best way to do it is to use hospitalization. I think the burden is somewhat similar to might be what it was in April. You know, but we also weren't protecting the nursing homes as well as we are now in general. So you had more hospitalizations because we are doing a better job protecting the elderly. If you look at what the, where the cases are coming from, it's not as many 70 and 80-year-olds. It's flipped from what it was earlier on, at least of the known cases.
So Scott, so you're saying for the 60 people, there's only about 35 households.
Well, maybe more than that. I would say at least every other household generally gets hit with a second person. Yeah.
So is there, I know anecdotally it'd be different, you know, depending on people, how, how many people they see in a day versus someone not seeing any. But so as we interpret these numbers, is there any kind of rule of thumb that on a national scale anyway that they've developed like X, you know, person one gets COVID? How many typically does that exponentially end up equating to?
You know, I could find that out. I just haven't looked, you know. Yeah, there is, there was a way you could do that in the CDC. There was a number one, you know, it's, it's what they call the R value.
Because that I think would be helpful of making these numbers seem a little less onerous than they are.
I wouldn't say they're not onerous. They are, they are what they are. They're not as what, was what we're used to. They're not what they were in the spring. That's why I like going back up to, and to me, this chart tells you everything, right? It tells you the weekly cases and what we are. So, you know, we're not in a good place for us. We are in a good place for other communities. Yeah, I think a lot of communities would take our rate and where we are. But, you know, for us, we compare ourselves to us, you know, it's definitely higher than it's been. And again, yeah.
I just, I just think that if you, if you look at something and you say, okay, yeah, this one person begets 16 other people, then maybe as a, as a community, maybe the best practices we're doing, you know, kind of good on. And then we just have to make sure we don't have that one person type thing.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, it's hard necessarily, it's also hard. So John, if I was contact tracing you and I said, where were you over the last 14 days? You can't necessarily pinpoint everything either. So it does, it is difficult when it comes to that to know exactly, you know, exactly the, you know, the ins and outs of every case.
Right. You know.
Hey, thanks.
I think it would be perilous to assume that it's, it's a small minority of people. I think we all have to remain vigilant.
Yep. Yeah, you got to think about the things that you guys were doing earlier in this pandemic and you may be released and let up a little bit and start to bear back down. We are starting with our vaccines. That's why I like to give the good news last. I don't want to leave you with bad news. And so we can talk about that. You know, we're starting to get, we're starting to get to the point where we can start transitioning to protecting the people, you know, protecting. And then the cases will go down as a result.
Terry, did you have a question?
I did. How do we know, when we make a test now, do you automatically test for this new strain that's coming from England or you have to do a special test?
Well, it'll pick up on the, it'll pick up on the general PCR, but then they can go further and determine it. I mean, no, it's, the general PCR collects it from my knowledge. It's not like it's missing it and coming back negative. But the, but there's some specialization in the test that they have to do to find whether it's this particular variant or not.
Do they do that now because?
Not on all samples, but they have been doing it on a random sort of, you know, an epidemiological, you pick a sort of random sample size and you start testing for that to see the prevalence of that versus anything else. So there's states, each state sort of got their own way of doing it, but yeah, they are.
So it could be in Falmouth, but we don't know it for sure.
Yeah, because the PCR is just going to pick up for that. I mean, you have, yeah, you wouldn't know for sure, you know, where everywhere it is in every community. No.
Dr. Parkinson, did you want to say something? I saw you unmuted.
No, I, just to say that, you know, the, the PCR test, if you think about it, looking at a big chunk of the virus versus the, you know, the new strain, it's a tiny portion of it that's different. So the test is going to, as Scott said, going to remain accurate. And I don't think I would get so, I think the focus still needs to be on the same thing Scott's talking about. The, you know, the just staying diligent with the basic social safety practices regardless of which strain it is. That, that's important from a research point of view. And it's important from an easiness of spread point of view. But in terms of what each, each of us needs to do on a daily basis, it doesn't, it doesn't impact it.
And maybe one way I could sum it up is organized, controlled environments seem to do better than uncontrolled, unorganized environments, if that makes sense.
Yeah, that makes sense. Did you want to tell us something about vaccination?
Oh, can I please give some good news? I'm so sick of being the doom and gloom guy. Okay, so here's the state's order for vaccinations. And I put a red line for where we currently are. Our first responders began vaccinations, yes, on the 11th, so yesterday, yay. The town of Sandwich had offered it for the upper Cape Town. So of course we'll take advantage of that. So we've been scheduling that through Sandwich Fire. A lot of news, you know, the state's been really working it through and giving us information in a very controlled manner. You know, we do get a lot of calls from the public, you know, when's it my turn and things of that nature. This is the list. The town of Falmouth is working with Barnstable County, who's currently vaccinating the first responders in the non-upper Cape Town. So the lower Cape and mid-Cape. We've partnered with them to set up a COVID vaccination site. I'll release the information when it's all set in stone. So we're still working out the bugs. It'll be looking at it to do it on a regional basis to start perhaps right at the end of phase one, but more towards phase two with the 75 and older and two comorbidities. You'll also have opportunities elsewhere. It's, it's not just going to be, you have to come to a town of Falmouth Health Department sponsored clinic. There'll be other opportunities elsewhere. But we're prepared with our throughput to do a drive-through style vaccination. Everybody would be registering on a site called PrepMod. You'll hear that word. So maybe you haven't heard it before. This is the first time you heard it. PrepMod is national. I think the state, each state sort of tweaking it. Our state just finished, Massachusetts just finished beta testing it and started, it started to rock and roll today. Yeah, yesterday, actually. PrepMod is where you're going to register online once this becomes your time. And we'll post as a health department all over the place as much as we can that you can start registering online at PrepMod. It's going to ask all the pertinent information. And the reason why is if each town was using Excel spreadsheets and lipstick and napkins and pencils and paper, it's kind of hard to get all that information back up to the state and over to the CDC. So it's going to be a sort of a national registration. If you heard today in the news, for example, that Gillette Stadium will be a max fascinating mass vaccination site. We'll have, we'll have it here at, you know, we're looking at the fairgrounds as our, our location to drive through, same spot where we're doing the code, where they're doing the testing. It's got some benefits. It allows you to do a drive-through, but it doesn't, you know, it's, it's going to, the barn is dry enough, you know, so that the nurses aren't cold and wet. I mean, we don't want to do rain days. Our goal, you can't do rain days. Our goal would be to have this open all the way through June. So it's a long duration. So things are starting to move on that. You know, I wish I had more information to say when, you know, John and Greg and Leah could come down and get their shot. We're not at that point yet. We'll get there. And I think your pharmacies are starting to work into it. And some of the, some of the larger type of entities that could do it as well. So it's beginning. I think if you know anybody who's at Cape Cod Healthcare, a lot of them have already gotten their second shot. Some are real close to getting their second shot.
Yay, Melissa.
Yay, my wife just got her second one yesterday. Yay. You know, I tease her.
Parkinson got his too. I don't want to leave him out.
Yeah, good. So.
Something worth celebrating though, you know, it's really exciting to finally know people who are moving that way instead of.
Yeah, when anybody's, my wife was nervous about, you know, maybe getting a reaction. I said, are you kidding me? Tell me and tell me in April of last year, you wouldn't have been taking any. You would have done anything to get one then. So, I mean, you know, it's going, it's going, okay. I think people are a little frustrated that they don't know all the, you know, all the, when exactly it's going to happen. But we're in that sort of, we're on schedule for what the state wants. You have to do it in sort of a controlled manner, starting with the discrete groups like this. And so we're moving on it and we'll have, we'll have a site that's going to be, like I said, a regional partnership between. We're lucky in Barnstable County, if you didn't know, Barnstable County has its own health department, which works for the towns. Okay, it's not a regulatory body. It doesn't have the authority each town does. But no other, no, no other county has a health department. So we have another resource and we're going to use them. If you're, I think on the next one, I want for this next slide, if anybody wants to volunteer, especially if you're a medical professional, that is the information you want to use. You want to call Diana at the MRC. MRC stands for Medical Reserve Corps. We have several hundred volunteers so far, not just Falmouth. But that's going to be the bank of nurses. We're going to have contract nurses in the MRC working to staff the clinic. You know, if we have three lines going through the barn, that's going to be, you know, several nurses there each day. So it's a big, that's a big task. You could, you could contact Diana over at the MRC and that's where they'll vet. You know, anybody who can give a shot, we'd like to have you volunteer.
I'll just also add that it's not just, that they, they'll take volunteers for all types of things. I deliver food to people through the MRC, so.
That was my second thing. Yeah. So if you want to volunteer, because things, this is unique. So you need 15 minutes, up to 30 minutes if you have allergic allergy issues to hold you after the vaccine, right? So we're going to have to have people checking the vehicles up and down, making sure that nobody's having a reaction. We'll have to have medical services there. And, and so that's where the MRC helps. And, you know, we have the CERT team, which is the community, community, community emergency response team. And, you know, we've already, you know, already have this starting to rock and roll. It's just, you know, we get everything finalized and we'll have information in the next couple of weeks. And that's good news if you ask me.
Thank you. Any questions on this piece? Leah.
Okay, so I just wondering Scott, so for our teachers who might live in other towns, we're just thinking about where I, they should, should they get, should they get vaccinated in their hometown or should they get vaccinated in the town where they work and the schools? I know that's a weird question, but I, just thinking about the load for planning with vaccinations and once we get to that phase two for educators.
Scott, it looks like you're talking, but I can't hear you.
Sorry, I have this little silly button that sometimes hits my elbow. Sorry about that. It won't matter. The reason why you use PrepMod, so you can kind of get, I think the idea is that you're not locked into a particular town, like you registered with Falmouth and you can't go to Mashpee, right? That gets to be problematic. So hopefully the PrepMod takes care of that. It could be anywhere. This will be a region, our clinic would be a regional clinic. If you can see phase two is early education K through 12. So you fall into that category. You know, your teachers do. I don't know, not, not the school committee. You guys don't get special on the school committee. I didn't mean it that way.
Nope.
So, yeah, I don't think it's going to matter where. I mean, like the mass vaccination site at Gillette, that could be the spot you go if you wanted to take a road trip out to, you know, some of the stores there or whatever. But so no, you're not going to be necessarily held to have to come to Falmouth or have to come see me for it. I think the more places, the better.
So it's not that each town is getting. So it's not that each town is getting a certain number of vaccines for their people.
We have to order it, right? So in Falmouth, if I'm ordering it through the, through, probably going to order it through Barnstable County. So we'd use their order number. So you wouldn't see any vaccines on the Falmouth's order number. Per se, because Deidre, who's the town nurse, I'm not town nurse, the county nurse, might do the ordering for me, right? As opposed to Falmouth ordering twelve hundred for this clinic and we're just doing a regional clinic. There might be us to order it because I have to deal, you know, we have to deal with those who may not be able to make it to the clinic and we might have some specialty things that we have to do. We might find that Barnstable County is a little stressed. They'll have to run our own clinics on top of it. And then you might see us ordering. It's not an allotment quite like that, you know, it's about basically the, what the state would do is the vaccine unit would look at what you're. Asked for, what you used and give you a little bit less than what you think you need because not everybody shows up on the clinic. And a little bit, I've learned a little bit about the vaccine. Our town, Kathy, who works for me as a nurse. Was doing some of the vaccinations for the first responders. And the vaccine is very sensitive. I allot it to, it's the opposite of a James Bond martini. It does not like to be shaken nor does it like to be stirred. It's very sensitive. Once it's thawed, see, I would have thought you guys would have laughed at that.
We're just all on mute.
But it is, it is sensitive. It's not like a flu shot. These, these RNA ones can break down quickly. And so the state is very careful about not, you know, when you thaw it, you know, you only got thirty days on it or. So and then you also, once a vial is open, you only have six hours. So they're going to be very careful at the beginning. Who gets it and so forth. So you're going to start, it's a long winded way of saying it's probably going to go through the county. And I think you can pretty much get it anywhere. As long as we're all using the same vaccine, obviously you, you wouldn't take Pfizer once and Moderna second. You'd need to stick with the same brand, the same vaccine. The more flexibility in the system and the more easily that you can get it, I think the better. When we used to give, the town used to be the place to get the flu clinics. You didn't go to CVS and you didn't go to Walgreens, you went to the town. We had a lot less people get the flu shot than when it went to everybody. Because it became a lot more convenient to get the flu shot. And I think it's a lot, the more convenient it is for people to get, the better.
Melissa, did you have something?
Hi, thanks. Couple of questions. Thank you for, well, first a statement, thank you for putting up the volunteer information for folks that want to volunteer to help because I feel like at this point, people just want to help. Which vaccine, speaking of Moderna versus Pfizer, do you, do you have a preference? Are we going to try to stick with one versus another?
But Moderna would be probably what it is. It's because of the freezer temperatures, the specialized freezers that you would need for Pfizer. Which we do have access to them here. We have the MBL and I think we also would have them because for viral studies, they're required, they're needed. But it's good, Moderna is what's coming down now. Pfizer is what went to Cape Cod Healthcare. Got much better equipped to handling it, you know, bringing it to a drive through clinic when a Pfizer is tougher than it would Moderna would be. And further down the line is things like Johnson and Johnson, single dose and these other ones come down. That might be what is there towards the end into phase three. Make it a lot easier at phase three that we're giving out one versus two, right? That's half the effort. But I don't know, it might just always be the Moderna.
And then speaking of phases, this is my second question. If you could go back to your three phase slide, I just have a question about. Phase one, okay, the order priority, clinical and non-clinical healthcare workers during direct COVID facing care. And this really isn't a necessarily a. School committee question or, but I, I'm wondering, do the clergy fall into that? Because they are going on the COVID units, they are going into people's homes, they are, they really are face to face with the actual virus. And, but they have this unique. Title, I guess, because they're not. They don't have a, they're not a medical professional, but they're there working with. The patients and then they're going into. Their places of worship. I'm just, I'm wondering where the clergy fits in there and have they been? Considered.
I did not see it reading through the state where they would be, they weren't actually listed, but it's a good question. It's one I can, it's one I can send forward. I can kick that upstairs.
Thanks. And again, that was just like a question for me to you that wasn't. Sorry. Thanks.
Anything else before we move ahead? Oh, Leah, good.
So I, you know, there hasn't been any information yet around children, right? So when we're talking about all public, does that include, are we hoping that that's going to also include? Children under sixteen?
Who wants that one? Dr. Parkinson, do you want that one?
Yeah, the, the, the problem is Leah, that there are no published studies of the vaccine in young children as yet. And so they're not really going to be part of this first wave until there are studies. That support its use, which, you know, ultimately, in all likelihood, they'll be just as positive as every, everyone to date. But they're going to be, my estimate is, it's. For the kids under sixteen, it's going to be the fall would be my guess. You know, hopefully the, hopefully September. You know, I think sixteen and up is the age that's listed for the current, you know, eligibility. And fortunately, young people are, you know, less likely to get serious illness. But we're all aware of their potential to spread the virus. So, you know, hopefully that can, hopefully the sixteen and ups will get done in the spring to summer.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to comment on that because I do think that, that, you know, we need to be very cognizant of that for planning for next fall in school. That we still will need to probably have some COVID. Restrictions and as we're moving forward. So. You know, until we can get children vaccinated too. But I know that's on everyone's mind anyway, but just in thinking budget wise and what we need to do moving forward.
Yeah, thanks. All right. Well, um, thank you. I didn't know Scott and Dr. Parkinson, if you guys were going to stay around for Lori's update as well, you're welcome to stay. If you want to go, you're of course welcome to go. But thank you so much for, for joining us and filling us in on all the latest, especially some good news, which is really nice. Laurie, do you want to go right into your COVID update?
Yes, so I'm continuing to update the. Dashboard, you know, once a week. We've been very lucky since we've come back into school. This week, we want to just thank everyone for partnering, making good decisions. Keeping people home when, you know. You're sick. And I think that that helps and we hope to, to be able to move forward and continue with the in-person learning as long as possible. I just wanted to talk briefly about the BiNext rapid testing that we have, we're participating in. We are starting with our staff only. And we will, we do have the test. We are waiting for nurses to be vaccinated, which brings me to. The second update I'd like to get because we are offering the rapid test. Our nurses have been moved into phase one to be vaccinated. So our school nurses will be, the first dose will be on January sixteenth and then twenty eight days later, they'll receive their second dose. And then around February twenty first or so, we'll be able to start with the. Since they're administering the rapid testing, we'll start being able to, to offer the rapid testing for our employees. I do want to caution that it's. The rapid test is only if you have symptoms and staff. Will be asked not to come in if they have symptoms. They need to stay home. But if they start developing symptoms while they're at work, we'll be able to offer that as a benefit to our staff that they won't have to leave and get a. A test in a different location that we'll be able to conduct the rapid testing in school. So we're happy about that. T-Mobile came out with a great offer around hotspots. So we are getting a large number of T-Mobile hotspots free. And we have already identified over fifty families that we're going to be able to support. We were, we already had our other mobile hotspots that we had started in the spring. And they're running out as far as the service. And so T-Mobile is going to pick up on those. Thirty and then we have another seventeen new families and that's growing every day and we'll be able to support those. And then T-Mobile is offering free tech support as well. So just, you know, something that. Like a shout out for Mike Falconi is always finding the deals for us and, and being able to bring programs to us. And I just wanted to, I think that's another great option for us. And then I'm just going to conclude with some really fantastic news. I need to give a huge shout out for the Cape Cod Church. In East Falmouth, they generously donated ten thousand dollars to our Falmouth chapter of Cape Kid Meals. And Cape Kid Meals has, has been just. Such, it's just been instrumental to some of our families during this pandemic. And this donation is going to ensure that we'll be able to continue through the rest of the year. And so just really want to thank them for their generosity.
That's incredible. That's wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for Lori? John?
Yeah, yeah, just like a comment and a question. I just want to. Give a positive shout out and congratulations to, to Ryan Hurt. Who was a school resource officer and was promoted to sergeant. And was very well deserved and he's done a great job. And I, I think he learned some skills. From his wife Katie, the CBA of Morse Pond, Katie Hurt. Special Ed Building Administrator, because he did a great job with the kids. I saw him in person. At one of the events and just how he was interacting with the students. But on that note, I saw that he was going to be pulling double duty doing that. So I hope we have him for a while longer. And if you had any thoughts on a, a new school resource officer down the road to the Philbo shoot.
So we already have been working on the transition. And so Officer Senior, well, is taking over at some point this month, but we've been working on the transition since that. But thank you for, I feel remiss not to have given that shout out to Ryan. He will be well missed in our district. He was such an asset, but thank you, John, for bringing that up.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, John. Any others? Melissa?
I just had a question. I had, actually it was a parent that questioned me about. School safety, excuse me, bus safety surrounding. We had plans in the fall. For students that ride the bus to be in every other seat and that they would be wearing masks. And this parent has reached out to me actually on more than a few occasions that according to their children. There's not, people aren't sticking to their seats. There's not always mask wearing. What are we doing to make sure that the, as the drivers are driving and keeping the students safe? Are there monitors on the bus or is that an option that we can do? Because we've got. This one particular parent, but I'm sure that there are other students and parents that are very concerned with people not following the rules. That have been set up for the safety.
Patrick?
Yeah, we need, we need the bus number. That's, we'll, we'll do the research.
Yeah, so we, we have talked with, remember, we outsource the busing and. When we get these type of. Concerns, we certainly have reached out on a number of occasions to check.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. All right. Thank you so much. Thanks for the update, Lori. Next up, moving on to the acting on the memorandum of understanding between the Falmouth School Committee and Educators Association. It's a huge milestone, a long time in the coming. We have been working together with the union since. Probably almost six months, once a week, almost every week, sometimes two or three times a week. The union has already done their part, having their membership ratified. It was, from my understanding overwhelmingly. Supported and ratified by the members. And so just so the public has a sense, we have, you've heard us say like, oh, we're, we're still bargaining the MOA, still talking about it. So there are, you know, an ever evolving number of things that have come up because of COVID. That need to be addressed because things are so different this year. And so that's what this has been. These conversations and what the resulting MOA is. Sorry, I don't want to forget anything. So things like the health and safety protocols, physical distancing, remote and in-person learning, hybrid schedules. I mean, you can imagine anyone who has kids in the district or works in the district knows. All of the many things. So all this time that we were meeting, negotiating all these things, the teachers were continuing their, you know, incredible and heroic service to the kids in Falmouth. And I think I can speak for everyone saying that we're profoundly grateful for their passion, their expertise, professionalism that they have continued. They always have gone above and beyond and had to continue to do so for the last ten months. And so the only other thing I want to mention is that, you know, this is like, it's very exciting. I guess I already said it. It's a milestone. It's very exciting. It's an opportunity. Signing this agreement to like turn the page and start fresh and look forward instead of looking back and, you know, honor the Morse Palm banner, you know, we're all in this together. And it's just a really exciting thing to finally. Be at this point where we can sign it. So, and thank you to Andrea for sitting on the committee with me and to all the admin staff who. Who have worked so diligently to, you know, over the months to make this happen. Everybody, I think, has seen it. It was in, I think, the packet. I don't know if you want to take, let's take the motion first. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the MOA between Falmouth School Committee and the Falmouth Educators Association.
It's our second. Terry's second. Oh, everybody wants a second. Everybody's so excited. Terry got the second and is there any discussion? Or questions? Okay. It is a roll call vote because we're meeting. Oh, sorry, Lisa, go ahead.
I actually just, it's just a comment more than anything. I wanted to. I'm sure I speak on behalf of the school committee, but I know this has been an arduous task for, for our. Committee was going through negotiations and. You know, I really appreciate the amount of time and effort that the, the administrative staff has put in. As well as the school committee, as well as the FEA. It took everybody collaborating together to make this finally happen. And I just want to say thank you because I know it was a lot of work. So, thanks.
Thank you.
And we stuck with it, you know, so I know that there are districts across the state that, that didn't, but we did. So, and so here we are. Okay, we have a motion in a second. It's a roll call vote because we're meeting via Zoom. Bill, you're first.
Yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yeah.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Kinalopoulos, yes.
Oh, my goodness. I almost called on Joan. Sorry, John.
John Finer, yes.
Andrea.
Andrea Thord, yes.
Terry.
Terry Madures, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also, yes, passes unanimously. Yay, very exciting. Thank you guys so much. So related to the MOA, there was an item. That provides for early release days in the second half of the school year. As you'll remember, we added a couple of early release days for the first half of the year and said we were going to revisit it. And now we're adding a couple more. So because there's a calendar change that is within the school committee's purview. So in order to make that change, we actually need to vote on that tonight. And I apologize because it doesn't say specifically.
You want me to go over the.
Yeah, do you have the language? Because the motion will have to have the actual.
Yes, so the three half days.
Yes, so the three half days that we added for pre-K to four are January 27th, March 24th, and June 9th. So in the AM, students will be in person and then the PM, students will be asynchronous remote.
So is there a motion to amend the school calendar to provide for early release days, pre-K to four, for January 27th, March 24th, and June 9th? Melissa?
I'll make a motion to make changes to the calendar 2021 of January 27th, March 24th, and June 9th, 2021.
Very good.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
I'm sorry, who was that?
I don't know.
A second.
Andrea, okay.
Any discussion on that one? The only comment I'll make is so, you know, it's coming up, January 27th. So we just want to make sure that our, our families get notice of that as quickly as possible because I know our schedules get crazy. We want to be, everybody to have time to plan. So does somebody say something? Okay, it's a roll call vote. Bill, you're first.
Yes.
Leah?
Leah Palmer, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Cantalapolis, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Terry?
Terry Maderas, yes.
And Kelly Welch, also a yes. So that's unanimous as well. Awesome. Next on the agenda is acting on an additional bill signer assignment. So at the start of the year, we put together our list of all the tasks that everybody's going to take care of as our school committee responsibilities. Bill has been incredible in doing that all year, going, you know, arranging to meet outside to sign the bills every week. And he is on hiatus from doing that. And so I am the secondary signer and I've been pinch hitting, but we need somebody else as well. And I actually asked Terry if she wouldn't mind because I know that she has availability in the window, which is Wednesday mornings. And she kindly said she would. So I'd like to.
Can I just say I want to raise and pay though? Okay?
Yes, I think we arranged, she could have double what she makes already.
Yes.
We so appreciate it. So is there a motion to add Terry as an additional bill signer?
I make a motion to add Terry Maderas as an additional bill signer.
Thank you. Is there a second for that one?
A second.
Thanks, Lisa. Any discussion on that? And it's a roll call. Bill?
Yes.
Leah? Leah Palmer, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Cantalapolis, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Terry?
Terry Maderas, yes.
And Kelly Welch, also a yes. So that's unanimous as well. Thank you so much for billing willing and we're not taking anyone off. We're just adding one more person so that we can handle that.
Kelly, thank you. I'm going to leave.
Thanks, Bill. It was so great to have you tonight. We'll see you soon.
To be here.
Take it easy. See you soon.
Good night.
He wanted to make sure we voted on that one. Next up is the first read on Policies JF, JL, I'll just say the names. So it's School Admissions, Immunization of Students, Homeless Students, Enrollment Rights and Services, and Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care. Sonya, are you taking the lead on this one?
Sure.
Thanks.
So the Office of Student Services under the direction of Dr. Work, who can also answer questions, should we have any, is leading the charge in evaluating policies among a number of other documents and efforts in the district to ensure compliance related to the educational stability for homeless students, children in foster care, and military children. And so these four policies have had a first review by the Policy Subcommittee. And there's very specific language that's being asked to either be revised or added to ensure that we're fully compliant with the provisions for these children.
And this is just our first read, so our opportunity to read them and then ask questions or send questions and, you know, ask for more information. Terry, do you have something?
I was just going to verify with Sonya. These are really not changes. They're just, or Joan maybe to verify, they're really not changes. It's just to make the language be more in line with what the DESC wants, right?
Terry, yes, that's correct. There are a few subtle changes in the homeless student, the definition of homeless students when there was the Every Student Succeeds Act and there was some reauthorization in which they separated homeless students and students in foster care out into two separates, policies and governing rules, if you will. So that the homeless student policy needs, do we need to remove foster care students from that? So you'll see subtle changes like that, but there's no substantive changes to any of the policies. And then it's really clarifying some of the language and then you'll see on some, it's really the cross-reference to other policies just to ensure that the alignment between all of our processes and procedures for the protection of our students that are homeless, foster care, or military students are adequately documented and recognized across all of our policies.
Thank you, Joan. And then the only addition with immunization and school admission is that they cross, both of those cross-reference both the foster care and homeless student policies that they are aligned.
All right, thanks. Leah, you have a question?
Yeah, I actually, I have a question about the immunization of students. Because I see that there's a cross-reference here, but with McKinney-Vento, it allows for us to enroll homeless students without immunization records. So that's not in this policy and should it be in the policy?
That's why in the immunization of students, it's cross-referencing to the homeless students because in the homeless students policy, it speaks to the fact that we cannot delay enrollment because of immunization. So it's the cross-referencing piece.
So I guess my, so my question is kind of the reverse of that. Should it be in our policy? So we are clear about that. You know, I understand there's the cross-reference, but it's, if you're looking at the policy, you wouldn't know that. You'd have to go to that other policy to know. So that's, that's just, that's a question I have for, I guess, administration, but also the policy subcommittee.
Policy, poor folks thought that you were finally done with having to deal with all this after your monumental task and now you're right back at it.
I will just bring this to ourselves. For the policy subcommittee, if that is something that you would like to do, I'd be more than happy to provide you with the language as a written statement. So that it, that it's easily aligned to our homeless student policy.
We'll take all the language we can get.
I'd be happy to provide it to you.
Thank you. I'll be in contact with you for that information.
Certainly.
No, I was just going to say that we could just put a, you know, addendum on there just saying that would also be subject to any other policies, appropriate policies or state and federal law.
Yeah, and you know, I don't, I can't remember how it's done because this isn't the only one that has this kind of issue, right? So there's lots of policies that have to reference other things. So however we, we should, however we figure out how to do it or, you know, so that it's consistent and so that people understand that there are certain things that are listed that you have to then follow up and read. You know, however we do it so that it makes sense through the whole, yeah, go ahead.
Just to put a comment, because this policy reads, the only exception to these requirements are about doctors know or about religious, there's no, there's no thing that says here around homeless. So they say the only exception, but there is an exception for homeless students coming into our school system also. So I think probably that's, that is, that wording is what I just think puts it that it doesn't align with our other policies around it.
Right. Thanks. And we'll have a second read either at our next meeting or I don't know what your timeline is for policy. But when it's ready for our second read, it'll come back to us as well. All right. Thank you for that. And so Sonya, you're still on the hook because I think you're up for structured learning time as well, aren't you?
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right. So thank you for this opportunity. This is just going to be sort of an introduction to some of the changes that are happening because it's going to be continued conversation for us. In December, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education voted to make an emergency amendment to the student or the structured learning time regulations. And in part, one, they're trying to increase the amount of contact that students have with the adults from their school community and really focusing in on the exclusively remote model. Then moving into looking at how the hybrid models are structured and then sort of moving up and looking at the impact on in-person learning. In that, the context of that conversation, one of the clear outliers and impetus with the change was that students in the exclusively remote, but then just the extended time of being separated from the school community, being withdrawn, levels of depression, emergency referrals. So there's a piece that's specific to academics and then there's a very clear piece about the need to be connected and to have no caring adults more than just what might be available in the students', you know, life at home or life outside of school. And that there's additional people in the school community looking at that. So these, these things kind of all converged together and created this emergency amendment. And so coming into the reopening process, we didn't have specific guidelines that were outlined for us about the number of hours. And so that was a piece of the conversation that we discussed as a district that we discussed also with our Educators Association and it's one of the pieces that's in the MOA. So we did a structured learning time survey and it was a very specific request from the Department of Education, looking at the number of hours our students spend in-person learning in remote synchronous learning and then remote asynchronous learning. And there's a benchmark for approximately 35 hours of face-to-face time over 10 school days for the hybrid model. And that can include both in-person and synchronously scheduled time with the teacher in a remote setting. And then 40 hours in an exclusively remote model. Compliance for this, you know, making sure that you get that thumbs up from the Department of Education is tied to what's considered the dominant model for the grade. What that means is that even though we have exclusively remote students, we're going to talk about that in a second. In particular, in K to four, and that separation from their classroom teacher and the in-person learning, it's the in-person learning that determines from DESI whether or not we get the thumbs up. But we as a district wanting to do what's right by all students will be also continuing to evaluate the amount of contact time and what the model looks like for remote teacher relationships in that model. When we looked at DESI's definitions, live online classes, live streaming, small group instruction, anytime there's live interaction between an educator and the student and it can, it doesn't have to be the one designated sort of classroom educator. If we think about it from the elementary perspective, it can be specialist educator. It could be a counselor in the school, but there's specific contact for a very specific purpose and that counts towards that. So one of the pieces is that in collecting this time sample, which was collected for grades one, four, seven, and 10, the Department of Education, after the passing of the regulation revision, created a public dashboard that's available on the Department of Education's website. And so I'm just going to call it a couple of highlights now. And then based on the questions and inquiries, as we continue to learn more with this regulation going into effect next week, we can continue this conversation both within our district and then to respond to questions that you may have. But here's what stands out for us. When we look at Massachusetts districts, and it's a bit of dynamic data because some districts were asked to make pretty immediate revisions to the amount of hours. 13% of districts across the entire Commonwealth have students in grade one whose, whose main mode of learning is in-person, which includes us here in Falmouth. 20% are remote, 67% are hybrid. So that's really a standout. And then when we started to look more at the community dashboard, like Scott and like Dr. Markins who were sharing with us, we do see a number of these communities sharing with us, in many cases, that they're in the yellow when you look at their community impact with COVID. And then the other piece, just to share with you, is that on average, when you remove some of the transitions and staggered arrivals and dismissals, we are averaging about 25 hours of instruction a week. That same hour of instruction carries into fourth grade, being in the same school setting. What is a little bit different there is that when you look across the Commonwealth, it actually drops to 8% of districts who are fully in-person or that's their, their dominant model of learning in their elementaries at grade four. 24% go remote, 68% hybrid. When we look at the time sample at grade seven, knowing that we're sort of crossing from that in-person as the dominant model to the hybrid, our students are averaging a significant number of hours between the morning of the remote Wednesday and the structure of that, their remote week and following the bell schedule, and then obviously their in-person time. So they're exceeding the minimum requirement and they are part of, in the hybrid model, they're actually part of the great majority in the Commonwealth. So 66% of seventh graders across Massachusetts are learning in a hybrid model or the districts are structured and set up for the hybrid model. 32% are remote and only 2% at that level are in-person. And certainly among the significant challenges that I'm hearing from colleagues is, is the physical space because of the number of students in those grade levels. And then at grade 10, continuing, looking at the time sample, very similar in the structure that they are meeting the basic requirements, they're slightly above them. I shouldn't say, you know, as simple as meeting. Our hours to exceed what the regulations requiring. But 66% again are learning across the Commonwealth and in the hybrid model, which includes Falmouth. 33% in the remote model. And at the high school level with the sample at grade 10, 0% report being completely in-person. I do realize that 66 and 33 are 90%, 99%, but that's what's being reported. And I did verify as of this evening, that is still what's publicly reported. So we'll have to find the 1% outlier there at some point in that dynamic data. But that's just an overview and an introduction to what's happening, what's changing, the catalyst for that change. And as of this moment's snapshot, where we fare in the Commonwealth.
Thank you. Leah?
So Sonya, is that data is dynamic? It's not from November?
So there was an initial time sample taken from November and then there were a small number of districts that were given some clear directive to increase time. So last week when I looked, it was only 12% at first grade that was at in-person learning. This week it went up by 1%. And while we're not continuously reporting, we're going to be asked to submit another time sample, I think, early February. I believe that the ones who are moving through that sort of corrective process, if you will, that data is getting caught up for them so that they're not publicly reporting it less hours than what's required.
So that actually ties to my question because I feel like districts have had a big shift over this, this last month from where we were in mid or beginning of November, so after the holidays. So it would be interesting to get that snapshot now of where districts are because we might find that, you know, Falmouth is even a smaller percentage of that in-person now.
Yeah, I agree. So that's, you know, right, once you get into that, that data space, right, you want to keep looking. And that's, yeah, I have to be careful with the dashboard. It's like where you start your day just to see what happened. I guess it's a little bit like Scott McGann looking at the other numbers, right? You want to see what happens, so.
Well, and it's nice to, if you want to start your day like that, like that's a nice way to start because it celebrates the fact that we have so many of our kids in school, which is what everybody, you know, that's what we've been working toward and the fact that, you know, we seem to be kind of in the minority is, but not kind of, we are way in the minority with our elementary school that we're able to have them all in person is just remarkable. I don't know. I'm still thinking. So any questions for Sonya? How about that? Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for good news. The next up is the presentation on the Superintendent's Mid-Cycle Goals. Lori, are you taking this? Natalie, did you want to introduce it? Who's, who's going? Oh, we can't hear you.
I just realized that. I think Lori can discuss her goals and I'll just speak very briefly to the evaluation. I just realized that. I think Lori can discuss her goals, and I'll just speak very briefly to the evaluations that we received.
Great. Thanks.
All right. So goal one was to implement a district-wide plan and school-specific plans in response to COVID. So far, the some of the actions taken since the beginning is having weekly individual and group meetings with the district administrators and principals to review plans to ensure implementation of the district strategy. Communication with school, the community, a school community, updates at every school committee meeting, weekly letters to staff and families, the website has our plan, all the letters, any updates and COVID resources. Social media, we announce meetings, provide updates and any reminders. We've had two parent forums and four staff forums. We've also had a conducted a staff, family and student survey. And we've analyzed the data and it's been broken down to the at the school level. And now each school with the staff will go through those survey, all three surveys to look at the feedback. We also have the staff and parent reopening advisory that we started early in the spring. It is continuing. We continue to meet weekly and just continue the conversations about the the status. They helped devise or actually devise the parent and student surveys and actually did the analysis for us. And we certainly are moving those conversations forward to the possibilities and what the spring might look like. Go to is the focus on equity, inclusion and diversity. So working with principals and other district leaders to establish a vision and common language and launch professional learning for all staff. The challenges are beliefs, understandings and practices in the pursuit of equitable academic and social emotional outcomes for all students. So far, we have facilitated book study on decent actions with our administrative team and with our PTO and school council. At the PTO and school council, they have also, they conducted the summer book study, and they are also conducting a winter book study. We've participated in professional learning with Dr. Police Wornham. We've the administrative council has now had two sessions, one in August and one in December. We've had one joint session with the school committee and the select board. We've had one session with the entire Falmouth Public School staff. Dr. Police Wornham is also supporting some individual schools at Lawrence and the high school. She's supporting a team at each building to build their capacity. And then she's also supporting us principals around some individual situations to build capacity and to expand and transfer the the learning from the situations. We have developed an equity vision, common definition and language. And we are, we have developed district-wide goals and multi-year steps that we've already reviewed earlier on the fall. We're hiring a diversity, equity and inclusion coordinator. That's in process. I believe that we'll hear more about that from in the the next meeting. And we're continuing to review curriculum for inclusion opportunities and monthly resources for staff and families, and we are working with No Place for Hate around some curricular opportunities and some work around Juneteenth. The third goal is around homework policy and practice concerns in grades pre-K to twelve. This was left over from last spring. The target timeframe to continue and to wrap up recommendations for the school committee is February to April. And then my last goal, my professional practice goal is to continue in the new superintendent induction program. So far, we've had five content sessions and three consultancy sessions. And I've participated in all the assignments, which are mainly focused on reopening current issues and diversity. So that's my review. Thank you, Natalie.
So thank you for that. Thank you for the summary. And also just I want to say a quick thank you to everyone on the school committee who submitted a mid-cycle evaluation from Lori. We have those, and I also shared them with Lori as well. It's just really interesting to see how much we seem to appreciate the COVID updates that Lori gives on a regular basis. So thank you for that.
Any, thank you. Thanks, Natalie. Any comments or questions for Lori? Andrew.
Thank you for that, that update, Lori. I appreciate it. The, you know, obviously, a lot of these things are very in the forefront, especially related to all the COVID communication. And I know that your communications also have been addressing some of the equity topics. And in particular, having the the breakdown of the monthly topics and themes. And I guess I was just maybe hoping to hear more either tonight or in the future sort of how some of those themes that are being discussed kind of can disseminate more to our students, family and community. Because I know that they're they're really big topics, right? And there's a different one each month. And I guess I'm just not hearing a lot of the outcomes from that. And I'd like to know more about that, like I said, either tonight or at a future in future meetings.
Okay, we can definitely do a more in-depth in the future. Sonia, would you like, Sonia's leading our district-wide team that's developing the resources or I should say, curating the resources. So I don't know if you want to briefly now, but then we can certainly try to put something together for next meeting.
So we we are fortunate to have our professional association, the Mass Association of Schools Superintendent. And I belong to the Assistant Superintendent Group, you know, at large. And so the resources, it started to be pooled and shared. And so we had started a professional conversation about sharing some of those. And so I brought that back to the team with whom I'm working. And so there are a couple of places we've made some adjustments and some additions. But one of the things we were talking about was making it to some of the connect connections to the work that we have is is Superintendent Dore outlined, moving forward with the continued book studies and the conversations that are happening in our schools and making connections between the resources we want to share with our community and the work that we're doing, and then tying it back into some of the curricular shifts that are happening. So certainly, we can have more at-length conversation, but these things are starting to come together in the the constellation, if you will. Except that analogy is is starting to take focus, so you can see that.
Thanks. So maybe we can hear more about that in the future. Leah.
Yeah, because I I think that would be wonderful to learn more about that, seeing as though that really is our goal also. So as much as we as a school committee can align with what our school administration and staff are are doing and exploring and having conversations about, that would, that would be great. I I wanted to just note, Lori, that I I think it's great that your newcomer superintendent group is also focused on these these big, you know, these big bucket areas that you're focused on. So that probably enhances you working towards these goals too. So that's, that's a nice tie.
Yeah, it's all connected because our goals are the same as well. So, yeah. Yeah. So we benefit from the fact that you're participating in in that program as well. Yeah. Any other questions or comments? You know, I don't, you know, I feel like I need to always say that our silence doesn't mean that we disagree. You know, like, I think that everybody would agree that it's been a crazy half a year, and your accomplishments towards your goals have been remarkable. And, you know, no amount of praise would be enough anyway. So, you know, I don't know what else to say. Yay.
Very much.
So we'll just leave it at that. Okay, moving on. I can't believe how quickly we've moved tonight. It's crazy to me. So next is approving our minutes from our December eighth meeting. Is there a motion to approve the December eighth meeting minutes? Melissa.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from December eighth.
Yes, our second, Terry's got the second. Did anybody have any edits or corrections? Are we good? Okay, great. It's a roll call vote. Leah, you, oh, John, you have something? Go ahead. Sorry. Oh, I can't hear you.
Sorry about that. Thanks.
There we go.
Let me, I'll just go to the spot that sorry, I just looking, going to read that quickly. The it said, you know, it says, heard John Finer requests the board reconsider signing over school land to the town. I would add for the purposes of of the carousel to that.
You don't, you don't think it was, oh, you're worried that it's it's more, it's too general?
Well, it's generally saying I'm, you know, reconsidering. I mean, I didn't want to sign over the the land to any third party. But if it's saying to the town, I mean, ultimately, all of our land within the schools, you know, whether, you know, the town versus versus the school and that sort of thing, I don't look at it as a as a zero sum thing. We're part of the town. But, you know, signing over to the relinquish control of the land with regard to the select board for the purpose of giving it to the
For the purpose of the carousel.
Correct. Yeah, if you could add that, that'd be great. Thanks.
I just want to mention that in paragraph one, after the motion by Kelly Welch, it's noted that Town of Falmouth's shown as proposed lease site of plan prepared for Carousel of Light. I don't, is that, do you want more than that, John? I'm just trying to clarify. That's all.
Yeah, no, just that my comment was referenced in, you know, with my specific comment referencing it as I had said that.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
A higher up so that it's not, it doesn't get construed as being a general statement about all land and all the town.
Yeah, I feel like I had a comment in there as well, and it's not, but.
Well, I think everyone made our regular comments. We sort of had regurgitated the conversation we had previous, and we don't usually put every comment unless it's something a little bit different than.
Well, I know we had other board members too that made comments about precedent and things of that nature too.
Yeah, we don't generally put that whole, you know, because can you imagine how long our meetings would be if we put everyone's every single
Rights General Discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if on if on mine, it could just reflect that it was with regard to giving it to the select board to give to the carousel. Thank you.
Right, like not to the town, but to the
Yeah, it wasn't like saying anything against the town because we're part of the town. But with relinquishing it, you know, to the the select board to give away to the carousel of light people.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other edits? Okay, so it's a roll call vote on approving the minutes with one correction. And Leah, you're first.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Melissa?
Melissa Keith, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Cantoplis, yes.
Terry?
Terry Medias, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
And Kelly Welch, I'm also, yes. So those are unanimously passed. And the last thing on the agenda is report from chair and committee member reports. I just have two quick things. One is that our next school committee meeting is Tuesday, the twenty-sixth. In the very slight chance that town meeting doesn't finish in one night, that would be the second night of town meeting. And so just have that in your head in case it looks like, you know, we may have to cancel at the very last minute because we can't be in two places at the same time. And it's not just for people who are school committee members, I mean, who are town meeting members and school committee members. But just in general, the public can't be in two places at the same time. So just have that in the back of your head. And the other thing is that I just want to mention, in case you didn't already have it on your calendar, that No Place for Hate has their annual Martin Luther King Jr. event next, even though they can't have it, obviously, in person, they still are having an event next Monday at noon. And it's via Zoom and of particular relevance for the school committee because it's on why leaders must center on racial justice, which is so closely aligned with our goal. So you can register for that Zoom event at their website for No, No, No Place for Hate Falmouth. Any other updates, committee reports, agenda items, anything? And now?
Just very quickly, the Town's Affirmative Action Committee met last night. They had been compiling public feedback related to the diversity coordinator position. So they voted to their recommendations, which they have then forwarded to us, so it's our, us being the school committee. And so the committee, the subcommittee to go over the J D for that position is going to meet next week or the week after, I believe. I have to sort of finalize what that will look like.
Thank you. John?
Well, two things, one, the possible agenda item, it might not be necessary. And then the other one on the update on the collaborative. So I just a clarification on the tremendous, very generous donation from Cape Cod Church of $10,000. Is that something, is was that to the school that would be something that we would have to approve as a donation? Or did they pick it up and do the lunches themselves or?
So it goes directly to Cape Cod, Cape Kid Meals.
Okay, cool.
So it goes directly down, and then they send us food. Yeah, so we don't
No, that's awesome. Just on a, I just figured procedurally, so, you know, we were, you know, crossing our Ts, dots and Rs and everything. And then on the with the collaborative, we're in the talks for the legislative breakfast. We're going to do a Zoom legislative, you know, theoretical breakfast. And but it's with all legislators. So initially, the delegation had, we're shooting for a target date of January twenty-second. Paul Hilton and myself requested to push that back to February twelfth. So at which time we could already have the governor, you know, is scheduled to release his budget. It's expected to be the week of January twenty-second. So then that way, it'll be able to be, you know, ratified in both the the Senate and the House of Representatives too. So then that way, if it's February twelfth, is the target date from nine AM to 10 AM. So if you want to keep that date open, then that way, all of the districts that are participating, you know, will have the 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 correct budget information.
And John, we'll get an email or something with all the
No, absolutely. Absolutely. As we get close, we'll get it. It'll be, it'll be posted, and I'll share the email as soon as we have the dates and from them.
That would be great. Thank you so much because I know people like to attend. Andrea?
I just wanted to piggyback on what John was saying is that we're looking at adding on a Division VII meeting to the legislative breakfast. So just to kind of coordinate those, same thing, virtual, but more on that as well very soon.
Great. Thank you. Any other committee updates, reports, announcements, agenda? Going once. Is there a motion to adjourn? Melissa's got it. And a second?
Second.
Thanks, Andrea. And it's a roll call again. Leah.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Melissa.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Lisa?
Lisa Hart, yes.
Natalie?
Natalie Cantoplis, yes.
John?
John Finer, yes.
Andrea?
Andrea Thorold, yes.
Terry?
Terry Medias, yes.
And I mean, yes, we're adjourned. Thank you guys so much.